All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the West Covina Planning Commission for Tuesday, February 26, 2019. The meeting will come to order, and we will begin the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Jaquez. If you would please rise and remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards. Thank you. Mr. Director, may we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Hing.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Jaquez.
Here.
And Chairman Redholtz.
Here. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on February 12th. Any commissioners wish to make any changes on those minutes? Seeing none, those minutes are approved as presented. The next item is consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar, so we shall move to oral communications. I have no cards listed for any items other than agenda items. So this is the time when you would address the commission on non-agenda items.
[inaudible]
Okay. So seeing there are none, we will move right along to item number two, which is the first of the public hearings tonight. This is an administrative use permit number 18-16, Subcommittee for Design Review number 18-20, a categorical exemption. The applicant is Mariano Magseese. I hope I'm pronouncing that properly. At 417 South Campana Flores Drive. We shall now hear the staff report. Mr. Anderson, who will be presenting that?
Our planning assistant, Renee Aguilar, will be presenting that report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow planning commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting administrative use permit number 18-16. The applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to construct a new two-story house. The surrounding zoning and uses and environmental determination are included in your staff report as well as in the screen. An existing single-family residence was built in 1920 and shall be partially demolished and converted to an accessory dwelling unit. The accessory dwelling unit is for reference only and is not to be reviewed by the planning commission tonight. And here behind me, you see the existing house. So the applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to construct a new 4,923-square-foot two-story residence. The house will include an attached 659-square-foot three-car garage, 150-square-foot balcony, 273-square-foot patio cover, and a 286-square-foot portishear. The municipal code requires the approval of an administrative use permit to allow for all new two-story houses. Subject property is located on level topography. Just walking you through the site plan behind me. What you see in green is the landscaping. In red, you'll see the new two-story house. And then in blue, you'll see the existing single-family residence, as I mentioned, to be partially demolished to allow for the 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. The first floor will feature a kitchen, bedroom, bathroom, dining room, family room, gym room, and a powder room. The applicant is proposing an attached 659-square-foot three-car garage on the west side of the house. Just walking you through again, that's the first bedroom, two bathrooms on the first floor, the three-car garage, dining, lobby, and bar area, kitchen, family room, gym. On the second floor, the second floor shall feature a master bedroom with a master bathroom and master closet, three bedrooms, a bathroom, a playroom, and a laundry room. So you can see the three bedrooms, two bathrooms, playroom, a laundry room, and going back. So as you can see, going back to the first floor and this second floor, the house will feature a total of five bedrooms and three bathrooms. The subject property is on a 22,343-square-foot lot. The maximum allowable size for under 24,999 is 4,000 square feet. An administrative use permit is required for the maximum unit size exception when the proposed addition exceeds the maximum allowable unit size. Because the proposed home would have a total floor area of 4,923 square feet, and that includes the garage, therefore it requires a maximum unit size exception. Furthermore, the municipal code requires the approval of an administrative use permit for additions exceeding 1,250 square feet in size. The proposed house will be 3,651 square feet larger than the existing house, and therefore an AUP is required for a large addition. The applicant provided the planning staff with proof of notification from surrounding property owners stating that the property owners had been informed of the applicant's intention to construct a second-story house. Staff review of the neighborhood surrounding the subject property found that the area consists of both single-story and two-story single-family houses that were constructed between the years of 1920 and 2007. Staff conducted a survey of 14 homes surrounding the subject property on South Campana Flores, in which the house is located on, and we found that mostly the homes on the street all had attached garages. And then the chart on the screen shows the mean, medium lot size square footage of the homes, number of bedrooms, floor area ratio of the surveyed homes. The mean is the average of all 14 homes, and the median is the number that falls directly in the middle, if listed in numerical order. The median size of the homes is 3,187 square feet. The house sizes range from 1,585 square feet to 5,031 square feet. The house as proposed would be one and a half times larger than the average size of the surrounding surveyed homes by 1,710 square feet. Although the proposed home would be one and a half times larger than the average house size, the proposed house would not be the largest house on the street. What we see here behind me are the elevations, and I'll show you some renderings with a little bit of color shortly after. I'll walk you through these, and that is the front elevation, rear elevation, and you'll see that there is a balcony on the, which would be your left side. Side elevation, you'll see that three-car garage, and the other side elevation. That is a rendering for the proposed house. The proposed house will be designed in a neoclassical revival style that utilizes Bau-Arts elements. The proposed house will feature arch windows, paired columns, pilasters, plaster cast brackets, plaster cast pediments, and black wrought iron guardrail. The east and west wing gable roof that is connected by a centralized common reception area with a flat roof. While the proposed house is unique in its architectural style to the neighborhood, there is no unifying architectural style and is well-designed within its style. That is another view, and the ADU is shown in the back there for reference. In summary, the applicant is requesting an administrative use permit to construct a 4,923-square-foot two-story residence. The house will include an attached 659-square-foot three-car garage, a 156-square-foot balcony, a 273-square-foot patio cover, a 286-square-foot portishear. The house will include five bedrooms and three bathrooms, and the proposed lot coverage is 22 percent. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving administrative use permit number 18-16 and Subcommittee for Design Review number 18-20. That concludes my presentation for tonight, and the applicant is here for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Renee. Any questions of staff by the commission?
I have a question.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Jeff, did you send out notices on the, because I went down Virginia over there to Snyder, and then I went to Chauvers, and I wanted to see what the neighbors saw. And were they noticed? Did you get them a notification?
Yes, a 300-foot notification was sent. Do we say how many it was sent to, Renee?
I believe it was 23 surrounding homes.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's a 300-foot area, so.
Yeah, I have a question. Did, no neighbor requested a public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct. It was forwarded due to the second-story proposal, as well as the large, the scope of the size of the.
Okay. I know the Subcommittee asked for it to be.
As, yes, that is true.
Yes, okay. So, and there's no letters of opposition or?
No. I did not receive any letters or phone calls during the appeal, or during the noticing period or throughout the process.
Okay. And there also is no variance asked for?
No.
Correct? Okay, good. All right, very good, thank you. We will now go to the public testimony portion of the public hearing and ask the applicant to please come forward. And I don't know if I have a card from you or not, but when you get a chance, please fill out a card and give it to staff. Thank you. Oh, we have a card? Please introduce yourself and make your statement. Thank you.
Presenting my client. This house will be my client's first custom home. So my client is a very proud resident of West Covina, and it is my client's desire to design their own home that gives dignity to the neighborhood and as well to West Covina. It is our understanding and from our observation as well that West Covina has given the property owners opportunities to bring architectural history back to their residential building. We have seen ranch, craftsmen, Mediterranean, Spanish colonial revival, Greek revivals, French chateau, and Bau-Arts into your, in your city. We also have observed the diversity in multiple, for multiple stories building in different location in West Covina. We're confident that our design will bring more affluent, gifted, talented residents to West Covina, and they also believe that this investment will increase your property value to your property and the surrounding. Our design proposals actually pure Bau-Arts, and Bau-Arts is typically used to give dignity to what's supposed to be ordinary. Bau-Arts is characterized by orders of a three-formal design and grandiosity and elaborate ornamentation. So we try to stay true to our proposal. We include everything that's including in Bau-Arts. We have illustrated, we include balconies, columns, cornices, pilasters, and pediments. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Whose idea was the Bau-Arts to do that?
It is my client's interest to have this kind of house.
Was your idea? Okay.
She likes, she likes the art windows and the points.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'm Mariano Magseese. I'm the, I'm the property owner, and my wife's Tina.
So I got your name right then, didn't I?
Tina, right.
Magseese, okay, very good. How long have you lived there?
Since 2009.
2009? Okay, very good. Any questions of the applicant?
I got a question.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah, in the back, are you gonna have a balcony?
Yes.
In the back of the house? Now, my only issue is looking at the neighbors. I have an, I have an issue with that, so.
So Renee, can you show me the site plan? It is quite a far distance from the back. It's about 150 square feet, I mean, it's not square feet, I'm sorry, 150 feet from the back.
Okay.
And the other neighbors about, probably like 70.
Speak into the microphone.
And then, and the other neighbors probably about 70 feet also behind us, so there's.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
And then we also, we can also work with the city if we are required to put tall eucalyptus trees that will put a privacy screen. We will do that.
Okay.
We're willing.
Thank you very much.
And I actually talked to all my neighbors. They're very in support, they're very supportive of our drawings and everything. We show them the site plan and just all the details, too. And my neighbor's like, "Go for it." He said, like my next born neighbor, if you talk of closer balcony, they're all supportive. I say, "Go for it."
Okay, if they had an issue, they would be here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant while they're at the mic?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaquez?
Actually, I didn't really have any comment up until what you mentioned about creating a privacy screen at the back of the property, using eucalyptus trees. And although this may be the purview of another element of, for city to, for the city to review, my concern with that particular species is, is that is become, you know, falling into a lot of disfavor in a lot of communities, a lot of cities, because as they mature and get older, they tend to become, you know, the branches become weak, become threats to becoming, you know, trees that fall down easily in windstorms and that sort of thing. So that's just a concern that I thought you might want to address with, addressing this tree species.
Sorry, Commissioner, I'm just spilling out species which I don't know anything about. I'm not a landscape architect. We would actually put anything that you would like. Actually, I already have in mind. I would put up, you know, those like tall pine trees that, you know, it's low maintenance, and it gives you a lot of privacy where you see it in a lot of homes behind the fences. That's where I would.
You might be thinking about Italian cypress.
Yeah, I don't know what it's called, but I know.
Italian cypress, yeah.
And actually, I think that behind us, there's already a lot mature trees. I don't know, we didn't have the pictures, but there's like really, you know, like probably there for years, like behind that, behind a property.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Let me ask staff a question. We did not condition this for any type of trees or privacy issues to the rear. Am I correct?
There's nothing in the proposed resolution before you. It doesn't stop you from placing a condition, and that's completely within the.
Right.
Planning commission's purview.
But staff, when coming up with the conditions, you didn't feel it was an issue?
We didn't, although I do think that in general, what Commissioner Kennedy brought up is what our Subcommittee guidelines say. The little bit of difference here is this isn't a one-story neighborhood. There are other two stories around, so that's why we didn't take that extra step. But that is a very subjective thing, and it's really, that's why it comes with the planning commission, to make those kind of more difficult calls.
So what is the, is the, anybody wish to be heard on this, on the?
Well, you might want to see if there's anybody else that wants to speak.
Oh, that's true, that's true. Actually, I have a card from Ilus. That was you? Okay. So that's the only cards I have. Does anyone in the audience, I haven't got any more cards, wish to be heard on this in favor of this project? Seeing none? Anyone wish to be heard in opposition to the project? Seeing none again? So we will go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and now we can, as a commission, discuss this. Is there any opinions on the trees or any other issues with this project? Nope? All right, moving right along.
I can read your resolution number if you're ready for that.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Okay, there is one resolution. This is an administrative use permit, and so the resolution number would be 19-5980.
Is there a motion on the item?
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Holtz. Do I have a second?
I second.
I second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jaquez. Any further discussion on the motion? Apparently not. May we have a roll call vote, please?
I'll warn you, I have sneezes hiding in my nose. I can tell that.
We're ready.
Commissioner Holtz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hing.
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Aye.
Commissioner Jaquez.
Aye.
And Chairman Redholtz.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. This action is final, unless appealed to the city council within 10 days. Congratulations, thank you. We look forward to seeing that beautiful home go up. Appreciate your investing in your property. All right. Next item is another public hearing. Item number three. It is a conditional use permit number 18-09, categorical exemption, the applicant Erica Diaz, for adult daycare facility at 1501 West Cameron Avenue. Mr. Director, the staff report will be presented by whom?
Paulina Morales will be presenting that report, and because the title is too long, I will just say she's the Economic Development Manager.
Among other things, yes. Thank you, Paulina, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Housing was the only other word. That's a big word, yes. Good evening, Chairman and fellow planning commissioners. Before you this evening is a request by Cameron Adult Day Healthcare Center to operate an adult daycare center at 1501 West Cameron Avenue. An adult daycare center is allowed with approval of a conditional use permit or CUP. The applicant currently operates four adult daycare facilities throughout Los Angeles and Orange Counties. They provide services for adults with chronic medical, cognitive, or mental health conditions or disabilities. The proposed site, 1501 West Cameron Avenue, is located within Cameron Court Office Buildings. It's a four-building office complex located in the downtown district, right behind the Kmart site. It is sewn general urban T4, and it's surrounded also by general urban and central, urban central to the north of it. The tenant space of 9,577 square feet is located within the first floor of Building C, Suite 100. The space includes a reception area, a community hall. A community hall, two bathrooms, a nurse office, social work office, daycare room, counseling room, occupational and physical therapy room, and an administrative office. The applicant is proposing to operate the Cameron Adult Daycare Center Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. Program hours will be from 8:30 a.m. to roughly 1:30 or 2:00 p.m., with the remaining hours utilized by staff for administrative purposes. They anticipate a maximum of 160 clients over the age of 18 during peak hours. The center will have 25 staff members, including, I think it was five administrative and 20 program staff members. There is no specific parking standard for adult daycare facilities. The prior uses were food service and office space, which uses, the uses are a higher parking demand than the proposed use. As such, the adult daycare use is not anticipated to exceed the previous parking demand. The applicant is requesting for a total of 30 parking stalls, 25 for employees, and five for their vans as they do transport their clients to and from the facility. In order to approve the requested CUP, the city must make the five findings, which are listed above. The finding number one, the adult daycare center will provide programs that are designed to provide support services for adults who are living at home but need daytime assistance. The particular location and use are desirable and will provide a service that will contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood and the community. Finding number two, the proposed use is limited to supervised onsite daily activities with adequate parking and a designated drop-off location. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, or general well-being of persons working or residing in the vicinity. Finding number three, the site is adequate in size and shape for the adult daycare center. Finding number four, the Cameron Adult Day Healthcare Center is located south of West Covina Parkway and Toluca Avenue, which are adequate to carry the traffic that will be generated by the proposed use. And lastly, the proposed use will allow the opportunity for the surrounding community to have access to desirable service and facility without compromising the character of the surrounding neighborhood nor be detrimental to the surrounding land uses. As the proposed, as the proposed use meets the finding, staff is recommending approval of the conditional, or CUP 18-09. The CUP will be subject to conditions of approval included in the resolution that's attached to your staff report. The following are some of the conditions specific to the operation of Cameron Adult Day Healthcare Center. The site will be used for adult daycare center. It'll be allowed up to a maximum of 160 clients, a maximum of 25 employees. The business operation hours will be Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and it'll have, it'll be limited to the current tenant space size of 9,577 square feet. The project is also a categorical exemption. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and the applicant Erica Diaz and King Woods are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Paulina. Any questions of staff? No questions? Thank you, Paulina. Would the applicant like to come forward, please? I don't have a card for the applicant, but she's here, right, Erica? And King Woods? That would be you, sir? Very good.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much, and I did turn in a card, but, oh, you got it, okay. First, I'd like to thank the staff. I mean, we were happy, good fortune of working closely with the staff throughout this whole process, and they were very professional, and they did an excellent job. The staff report is very detailed and done very well. We have read the staff report resolution, and we agree with all the conditions of approval. But I'd like to mention that in anticipation of operational questions that may come from the commission, we did ask Mr. Kim and Mr. Lee, who are administrators of the business, to be here as well. And we also have a representative from the architect who can respond to any architecture questions, if you have those type questions. But all in all, we are, we're happy with the staff report. We agreed to meet all the conditions of approval, and we think that this type of use is began, and I've been in this business for 35 years, this type of use because people are getting older. Adult care facilities or the urban developed all over the county of L.A. and certainly over the county of Orange County as well, and they're very important. So the staff covered this project very well. We understand the conditions of approval, so if you have any conditions, or either myself or the administrators or the architect, we'd be more than pleased to respond.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, any questions of the applicants or the architect or the operators? Wow. I have just one. There's a, the large community room that's on the site plan there. Is that where you would hold the, you know, there's, you talk about chess, you know, chess and, and what else? I assume that's where that look, that space is for, the large gatherings?
This area.
Right, yeah, that area there.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, that large area there, what is that exactly used for?
That would be primarily for the activities that are going on during the day. There are different areas, but that's the main activity hall.
So that's where a large group of people can be accommodated at the same time, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, very good. Any, any other questions? No? Well, appreciate you all coming down and bringing all your stuff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions of staff? No, quiet group.
I'd like to talk to you.
Go ahead. Mr. Director, you ready for the, I think we're ready for the resolution numbers?
All right. The resolution number would be 19, oh, sorry, it's a conditional use permit, so there's one resolution. It's 19-5981.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve?
Approve it, absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Kennedy, motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Holtz. Any further discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holtz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hing.
Aye.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes.
Aye.
Chairman Redholtz.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. This action is final unless appealed to the City Council within ten days. Thank you very much. Welcome to West Covina. All right. Time for the main event. Next item is item number four, which is a non-hearing item. It is a study session regarding code amendment number eighteen dash zero four regarding alcohol sales at service stations. Mr. Director, who will be presenting the staff report? I think I know who, but.
You might be surprised. Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will be presenting that report.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission and also members of the public. On June twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning Commission received a request from Mohsen Karimi, the owner of the Chevron Extra Mile Service Station located on two four five North Citrus Avenue, requesting the initiation of the code amendment to consider amending the municipal code to allow alcohol sales as an accessory use to service stations. On August twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number eighteen dash five nine six one initiating code amendment number eighteen dash zero four. This particular issue has actually been discussed several times by the, by the Planning Commission over the last few years. Similar code amendments were initiated in two thousand and eight and again also in two thousand and ten, both of which code, these code amendments did not move, move forward and were rescinded. During the September fourteen, two thousand and ten Planning Commission meeting discussion of the code amendment, the Planning Commission developed a list of potential standards. The list of sixteen items are provided in the staff report and incorporated, and incorporate the standards suggested by Mr. Karimi in his original letter. During the staff presentation, I will not read the sixteen items. However, during the Planning Commission discussion, we can go back and forth, and if necessary, I will, I will read the sixteen items for the purpose of discussion. The city has eighteen gasoline service stations in the city, and currently, in addition to that, there are fifty-five businesses within the city that sell alcohol for off-site consumption. During the agenda review period, staff has received ten letters and emails in opposition of amending the code to allow alcohol sales in service stations, in service station convenience stores, I'm Generally, a study session is held in between the code initiation and the public hearing to allow for the discussion on what standards should be included in the code amendment. Subsequent, the study session, a public hearing will be scheduled before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission will then make a recommendation, and the code amendment will be presented to the City Council. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission take public input and also provide staff with direction on what items would the code amendment contain. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I am available to answer.
I have a quick question here. Now, this, tonight is a, is a study session. We are not, this is not necessarily an action item. There'll be no vote tonight.
That's correct.
Okay. Any, any questions of staff before we go to the public?
And just to clarify a little bit further.
Yes, please.
What we're looking for, if you look at the recommendations in the staff report, accept the report to support discussion regarding the initiated code amendment and provide further direction input to staff regarding this code amendment. That's what we're looking for. Looking for information on what to do next.
Okay, yeah, because back in, it was September, the, the commission voted at that time five zero to initiate the code amendment process, just like we've done with other, other code amendments. Then subsequent to that, there are study sessions held. This is the first of what could be two or, you know, one more or two more. But the purpose of it is to get input from residents and also the, you know, business owners that are requesting it, and at the same time to develop standards that we'll accept if this goes forward. We want to hear from you, and then, once we hear from the public, then we'll hear from the fellow commissioners and we'll see where we're at at that point. So I think now, yes, Commissioner Holtz, question, please?
Point of clarification. I think some of the research, and I can't find it here right now, the state made a, a ruling that they could sell alcohol in gas stations. However, they also said that it was up to the cities if they wanted to allow that or not. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's, okay, so.
That's correct, sorry.
And if, if we allow that at a service station, then we lose that control to, for any other service stations. Is that correct?
If, if the code amendment, if the Planning Commission allows service stations to sell alcohol, it would be up to the Planning Commission to, to develop standards on what would be required of the service station, and one of, one of the standards can be a conditional use permit to be, would be required in order for a service station to be allowed to sell alcohol, which, and then would require a public hearing and individual review of the application.
But we would lose control of that blanket that we could restrict the stations.
I think what you're asking is, can, can we then decide later on, if we allow it, can we later on prohibit it again? My, my understanding of the answer to that is no, you can't. Once you've allowed it, you can't go back and prohibit it.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
I want to make one other quick point. If I'm not mistaken, the code amendment we initiated did not include the allowance of distilled beverages, correct? I believe the language we wanted in that amendment was beer and wine.
I believe that is correct. I don't think, we don't have the resolution in front of us, but I'm, that is what the applicant, that's what Mr. Karimi requested in his letter, I know, and that's what he has in his.
Right, because if my memory, if my memory, which is fading fast, if my memory is good, that evening, there was some concern about moving forward with the distilled spirits as part of it, and when that was taken off the table, we were able to move forward. Is that your memory too, Commissioner Holtz? Yes.
So, just to reclarify that, on, in the letter, it's on page one of the staff report, it says the advertisement of beer and wine should not be permitted. This is their suggestion for standards. And then number ten also prohibits the sale of beer and wine, folks under twenty-one, so it's pretty clear from that. And I, I believe you're correct. I believe the, the initiation resolution specified beer and wine.
Yeah, no, my, you know, I'm, I'm really, we all are aware of that. I'm really kind of stating it for the benefit of the public. That may not be aware that we have already taken the distilled liquor aspect off the table. So we're not looking at allowing any of the, of the service station convenience stores to have hard liquor. That's not part of it right now. Yeah. And, you know, the, the, the purpose of this is to come up with the, the standards that we would permit. So that's the study session idea. So keeping that in mind, this is not a public hearing, but I'm gonna kinda bring those that are in favor of it to be heard first, and then those that are opposed can, you know, make their comments on that. So Mr. Karimi, would you like to come forward, please? And give us your, your story. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Councilmember. My name is Mohsen Karimi. I've been serving West Covina for forty years. I have a couple locations in West Covina, and there are one in two forty-six North Citrus in West Covina, and then the other one is twenty-five, twenty-nine East Fork. Said my, hello, Mr. Commissioner. My name is Mohsen Karimi. I've been serving West Covina Public for four years, over four years. I started nineteen eighty, nineteen seventy-eight on Amor and Azusa. Now I'm still in West Covina. I'm here to apply for a beer and wine, not hard liquor, just beer and wine, like any other station in another city, to have a permit to sell. Increase the city profit, I guess, not my profit as well. I'm here to answer any question you guys are willing to ask.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Karimi? No questions? Okay. All right, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, guys.
And I have Hoshi Arda.
Yes. Good evening. How are you all doing? My name is Hoshi Arda, and I work in Chevron Station in Eastland Center, Eastland Chevron. I just want to let you all know, day in, day out, we have a lot of customer walk into a store and ask if we sell beer or wine. And we tell them, no, we're not allowed, and they leave the store empty-handed. And as you know, and of course, we send them across the street, they go to Covina, and they buy beer and wine over there. And number one, it helps our sales in the stores. It makes it easier to pay bills. Number two, my main concern is they all stop in one place to get everything they need. Either it is soda, beer, food, ATM, so they don't have to make too many stops when they go home or they go to work or, you know, in the evening mainly that's when it's happening. They buy beer and wine, which it is in a package, and they're not allowed to drink. They're in self-promises and they have to take it home. And what it is, is there are restrictions, of course. We're not requesting to sell single beer. We are not requesting to sell single beer can or bottle. And we will put so many restrictions so we be safe to the public. We assure that, you know, we do our part to get them out of there, to get home safe. And besides, if any of us want to buy beer or wine, when we go to a liquor store, we have to drive to go get the beer and wine from there. What makes difference is gas station. They go to parking lot, park the vehicle, they go in, buy a beer and wine, and they go home. I don't see why it would be, it's a big issue or a crime or related, or anything else that I've heard in last hearing we had here, that gas station shouldn't be selling it. And again, service station, we are not services. We don't call ourselves service station anymore. Service station was back in the days, back in sixties and seventies, when we had three loop-based mechanic shop. We are food mart. We are convenience store. It's different. And if you see all surrounding counties, all gas stations, they're all selling beer and wine. None of them are against it. Look at Azusa, look at Galandora, look at Covina, look at all other counties around us. Yeah, if, if this was a dry county, where nobody could sell beer, that would be different story. There shouldn't be any liquor store. Grocery behind me shouldn't be selling them. And, you know, if we, if I cannot sell it, what I'm saying is, why can't they go to Walmart or go to Barnes or any other grocery store buy it? It's the same thing. There are no liquor store. There are food mart. There are grocery stores. That's what we are. We are not service station anymore. And if you allow us after hearing everybody, you sure will appreciate it, and then it will make a lot of customers happy, where they don't have to go other place and stop, make so many different stops for what they need before they go home. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down.
Are you, sir?
Oh, we have a question, sir, from Commissioner Holtz.
Are you the owner of that station?
No, sir. No, sir.
Mr. Karimi, what's your role in the station?
I operate the store.
You operate the store? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And besides, now that you said it, Mr. Holtz, there are so many ways even to sell alcohol. We will ensure that our employees go to TABC classes. I don't know if you're aware of what TABC classes are or not. They're gonna get educated how to sell beer and wine. They're gonna get educated who to sell beer and wine, who to ask for ID, who to refuse the sales for beer and wine. There's so many different ways. And besides, we're not gonna put any display in front of the door or in front of the front counter. We're gonna, you know, put everything we have, all the big packages, they'll be in the cooler. They'll not be in anybody's way. We will make sure that, you know, we can, another deal that we can do is just to protect the public, protect the customer, protect everybody. We can register that they have to ring up the sales. We can program it, where they scan this beer, it's gonna tell the cashier, ask for ID, make sure they're, you know, they're not minors. You have to put the birthday in the register in order be able to sell beer, make sales fine. There's so many different ways.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about all that. We're gonna talk about all the standards and conditions, so, you know, we'll, we'll see what's built into that. That's a good, good suggestion. I'm sure it will come up during the discussion of the standards.
If I can be any help, I'm, I'm here for you. This is just, it is, I hope you are allowed. That's all I can say.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Before I call the next speaker, can we activate the clock?
Yeah.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Phil Kaufman.
Good evening. I see this whole issue is basically a historical anomaly, a distinction that should have disappeared years and years ago. To me, it sounds just like calling a gas station a service station. When's the last time you saw a service station in West Covina or anywhere east of Beverly Hills? They're gas stations. You pump your gas, and you go in and you, and you buy something in the store if you, if you want to. What's the difference? What's the real difference between a store with a gas station and a store with a parking lot? If you, if you want to buy two items, you want to buy gas and you want to buy something to drink, if it's beer or wine, why shouldn't citizens of the area have the convenience of being able to do that in one place instead of having to go get gas and then go next door, across the street, or a mile or two away, wasting time to get the beverage that they want? I just don't see, you know, an actual distinction there. And I think this, the issue or the, the possibility, this may have been brought up at a prior hearing, what if a store like Costco wanted to come to West Covina, as one time they, they were interested in? Would you still tell Costco they couldn't sell alcohol if they had gas pumps in front of the store? It just seems like it's something that, that there's really no reason to make this type of a distinction. As these performance standards, they're certainly comprehensive and actually overwhelming. I guess they were taken from the current law in the city of Los Angeles. Of course, Los Angeles and its four million people can buy gas and, and alcohol at the same time. They don't seem to have any problems with it, just like the list of local cities in the staff report that, that allow it. Covina, Glendora, Azusa, Diamond Bar, Whittier, County of Los Angeles. The only other thing, let me say, is that if the city wants to protect the public, then prohibit selling tobacco at gas stations.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Next speaker, Mr. Schumaker.
Here's a, a line that a lot of people probably wouldn't think I would say. I agree with you, Phil. I think the concept of just because you're selling gas means I can't sell anything else is just never fit, never has fit, never will, you know, from that standpoint. You know, there's places in the city where as I'm pumping my gas, I can walk next door and buy a bottle of beer, can of beer, hard liquor, whatever I want to, all my gas. and buy a bottle of beer, can of beer, hard liquor, whatever I want to, while my gas is, while my car is getting gassed up, because it's so close. So I think this is, you know, a distinction that really doesn't mean anything. There's times I stop at an AMPM mini-mart, because I want a bag of chips, or a candy bar, or a soda, or something else. I don't even necessarily buy gas at the time, it's just because I want something. I don't think it's going to stop people from drinking and driving, especially when they can go somewhere else and do the exact same thing. If anybody has that disease, or whatever you want to call it, that's not going to stop them. Oh, I can't buy gas the same place I can get alcohol, you know? With all the changes, why do we allow Target to sell wine or beer, or a place like, or Walmart? Because I can park my car that's electric and charge it up, and go in and buy beer, you know? So what's, what's the difference, the distinction, of that I'm pumping a liquid, or I'm putting in electricity? You know, it's, there really, in my mind, is no distinction. I think we should allow them to sell. And I'd even go a little bit farther, that if you have a mini-mart, you know, let the public, you know, what you think you can sell, go ahead and sell it. You know, I think trying to over-regulate this issue is that, and I understand people have concerns, but I think I'd be more concerned, and it'd be interesting to find out how many, since when the start, ten, eleven years ago, 2008 was the comment, you know, how many more places do we have in the city that, oh, wow, I just finished my second beer, and I want to go home, and I've got a third one in front of me, or drink, or whatever the case may be, that I can wolf it down and jump in my car and go home? You know, from that standpoint? You know, how many more do we have? And if we had a hundred places that you could, you know, get a drink and drive home, and now we have two hundred, well, have we had a fifty percent increase in drunk driving in our city? I really don't think a gas station, you know, regardless of the size, and I'd even say, you have a mini-mart, let them sell it, they have the space to do it. You know, it's kind of a distinction, because we don't sit down and say, you know, a place over on Glendora, you can't have a liquor license and sell beer and wine, because you're not certain square footage, unless I'm stating it incorrectly, because I see a lot of small places over there where I can buy a beer if I want to. You know, there's some mini-marts at gas stations that are larger, have more room. So I think it's just something that you let people compete, it's not really stopping anything, or prohibiting anything, except people who are in business being able to sell products that the public wants. You know, so I think that, in that case, I probably would have even fewer restrictions. I personally don't have any problems with hours and things like that, because it's done anyway, but size and parking, you know? If you want to worry about parking, let's worry about all the different buildings that go on that, you know, there's hundreds of people parking on streets, because we don't have enough parking in, for apartment buildings and things like that. So that's my point for the night, so, I know you're going to be spending a lot of time through it, so I put in my, you know, five minutes worth, and, you know, go ahead and move forward, and, I mean, there's no disrespect to people who have different views, they're entitled to them, and that's what makes things so good, but that's where I stand on it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? If not, I will move forward to those that are opposed. We'll start with Mr. Forrest Wilkins.
I'm Forrest Wilkins, my wife and I have lived in the same house for forty-seven years come October this year, so we're longtime residents. I printed up a one-page summary of how I feel about this, and I'm going to read it so the public here can hear it. And we're talking about alcoholic beverages in, to be sold in gas stations. The above issue has been the subject of discussion before the Planning Commission for about the last ten years, which has already been pointed out. It was about that time that I presented the fact to the city council that myself and other city residents, not just customers driving through, but city residents, had signed a petition against allowing gas station operators to sell alcoholic beverages. That petition at that time had seven hundred and sixty-seven resident signatures. Ten years ago, there were eighteen gas stations in the city limits of West Covina. There were also a hundred and forty-six retail establishments, and I don't have that broken down to how many were grocery stores, and how many were restaurants and bars, and so forth. But since that time, there have been an increase of retail establishments that do sell alcoholic beverages in West Covina. I don't have that exact number. If an individual has desire to purchase an alcoholic beverage in West Covina, there are multiple locations to accomplish a purchase of an alcoholic beverage. Citizens of West Covina do not want their teenagers and spouses to be dealing with alcoholics and gang-bangers when they are pumping gas in the, for the family car at the Gas Pump Island. Inside the store, where there's more people and so forth, an alcoholic who's under the influence, and a gang-banger is going to be less inclined to try to intimidate. But when our spouses and our teenagers are out on the island, they're kind of isolated, and that's those type of individuals are going to harass our people, our citizens. That's one of my main reasons why I'm against this. I am a retired thirty-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department. I have much experience in dealing with alcoholics, gang-bangers, and people under the influence. The history of alcoholic sales, as Commissioner Holtz had asked about earlier, it was state law that gas station stores could not sell alcoholic beverages, going back to the forties, going into the eighties. About nineteen eighty-five, the state legislature passed Business and Professional Code Law allowing gas station stores to sell alcoholic beverages. However, if a local city or county ordinance was in place, preventing gas station stores from selling alcoholic beverages, the state law would not override the local ordinance. As you know, West Covina has had ordinance in place. If West Covina changes the local ordinance to allow gas station stores to sell alcoholic beverages, that ordinance will be gone forever, no going back. That would be giving up a local control of one of our specific laws to the state. Just a sideline, several months ago, it was reported in news that a state legislator from the Bay Area was advocating a state law to regulate building of housing throughout the state. With luck, his idea did not get much traction. Citizens of West Covina like local control. Past practices show that the owners of two Chevron gas stations in West Covina keep trying to get the city to change the law so they can sell alcoholic beverages. The citizens of West Covina do not want to change the law. Last time this issue was before the city, it was the owner at Chevron at Sunset Mercet. This time, it's requesting the change of law is the one at Citrus and Workman. Gasoline and alcohol is not a good mix for West Covina. And to the new Commissioners, just to point out, this has been ongoing for about the last ten years. Commissioner Redholtz has gone both ways. One time, he gave a long dissertation about how it'd be good for the community to have this. The next meeting, he says, the citizens have spoken, so we're going to rescind this. Just a little history.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Next speaker is Dana Sykes.
Now, good evening, Commissioners and the audience. I don't know how many of you have served alcohol. I have. In fact, I used to work in a hotel, and I worked banquet. I used to love it when I got what's called a host bar, because that means people came in, and they could drink whatever they wanted, and that's when I really poured the alcohol, because people, when it's free, or when it's available, will drink. That's especially true of an alcoholic. When I worked in a nightclub, we had, once we cut somebody off, we had to keep an eye on them, because quite often they would do, and they'd go steal someone else's drink. Why? Because it's available, because they couldn't get it from us. Availability is a big problem. We have, already have fifty-five places that sell alcohol. Three of them are within walking distance of the, of the gas station. One's a liquor store, Bevmo, huge. Do we really need gas and alcohol? No, we don't. Whenever people are drinking, it lowers the inhibition, and makes them want to drink more. So when you have it readily available, when they pull in, well, then bingo, bonzo, I've got my alcohol. If they have to drive over to Walmart, or Target, or Bevmo, they might think twice about doing it. But if it's readily available, hey, let me have it. And when the fact that they're not selling singles, just recently, in the last couple of weeks, there was a car that drove up on the sidewalk, two guys were in it, they got out running, one was running with a big tall beer can. So when you say they're, no, it's only beer and wine, you get drunk on beer and wine. You just keep chugging, 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 you're, you're going to be drunk. So the fact that they try and diminish it as an alcoholic, it's still alcohol, it still makes you drunk. And I'm happy to hear that they would make sure their employees are trained, but I can tell you right now, not everybody that pours alcohol is conscientious, not everybody that sells alcohol is conscientious. And I was also taken aback by the fact that the reason why the man, the gentleman owner of the station wants it so badly, is because he wants more money. Well, I want more money too. But guess what? Limitations don't mean I can just go out and get it. I mean, if we're going to let them have alcohol, can we let them sell marijuana? It's legal in California. Why not? You know, we could do a lot of things that we don't do. Why? Because we're a family community. And what makes us different than other communities is our standards. Why are there more alcohol places in places like Watts, Compton, East LA, than there are in Bel Air, Beverly Hills, and Westwood? Because standards. Why can't we be higher? Why can't our standards be better, and keep them like they are? Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Potras, please.
Good evening, Jerry Potras, West Covina resident. Most of us, when we moved to West Covina, moved here because it's a family-oriented city. And I listened to both sides, I've read both sides, and I think that the ordinance should be, it's been here for years, and it should continue, because it's a resident issue. I really do resent a business who wants to make money and just dismiss resident wishes. We don't have to be like the other cities. I buy gas at convenience store that sells beer, wine. I've had problems at some of those gas stations with some of the hangarounders. I've not had problems, there's pros and cons. But when residents say they don't want this, that, it's our city. These gas stations, in some cases, are near schools, churches, apartments, condos, houses. And if we don't want the gas stations selling the alcohol, then that's what should prevail. The policy should be focused on what keeps or makes West Covina a wonderful place to live, not a little bit more money for a service station and a little bit more tax. There's other businesses that are selling the alcohol nearby. We want grocery stores, they sell alcohol. Let's not take away from them, it's not that big of a deal for people right now, so it's an inconvenience for some commuters. The residents don't really want this, you wouldn't have gotten the ten letters saying no, you wouldn't have people like me here tonight saying, just keep it as is. Let's keep the policies focused on the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Freeman.
Good evening, Heidi Freeman, thirty-year resident. I'd like to add my voice to the speakers against allowing alcohol sales in gas stations. I do enjoy beer and wine myself, but drinking alcohol is an activity that comes with risks that require responsible behaviors. We all know that drinking and driving don't mix. Selling alcohol in gas stations, a business that's all about driving, inextricably links the two activities, particularly in young people's minds. There are plenty of places to buy alcohol in the city, and purchase of alcohol does not need to be any more convenient or tied to driving. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Jopst.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners and city staff. You've, you heard from my wife, so I get to bat second. I'm firmly against any changes to the city's ordinances that would result in gas stations being able to sell alcohol. And for me, first and foremost, it is a public safety issue. Alcohol sales at gas stations invite drunk driving, not in all cases, but in some cases, it invites drunk driving. And I think we all have a responsibility to avoid any steps that encourage any additional drunk driving. Furthermore, as some people have already stated, including my wife, alcohol is already in ample supply in our city, at grocery stores, liquor stores, bars, and restaurants. I was doing the research online, as near as I can tell, there's a hundred and sixty-seven places in West Covina that are able to sell alcohol. We're eighteen square miles. That's nine per square mile, just based on the math on the surface. Now granted, most of those places are not in residential. My point is, we already have a huge concentration of places where alcohol is available. I see no compelling reason to increase the availability of alcohol. I enjoy, I enjoy beer a great deal, I don't need to buy it at a gas station, never have, well, not since high school, anyway. This evening, you'll hear the same points that I've made, as well as many others, that I haven't. I agree with the entire list of reasons to not allow alcohol sales at gas stations. And finally, most importantly, I look at our role as residents, I look at your role as Planning Commissioners. Whenever something comes to you, I think one of the questions that you reflect on is, how do I vote on this in terms of what makes West Covina a better place to live? And, you know, even the homes, the structural changes, the assisted-living facilities, you look at it through that lens. And when I look at this particular issue through that lens, allowing alcohol sales at gas stations fundamentally doesn't make West Covina a better place to live. So, thanks.
Oh, yes, sir.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah.
Hey, Brian, when you said a hundred and sixty-seven places, does that also include restaurants and bars?
Yes.
Because I know you do your research.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it includes, Mr. Kennedy, includes grocery stores, liquor stores, bars, and restaurants.
Thank you, Brian.
All of it.
Thank you, Brian. Elsie Messman.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, and I'm kind of tired of coming up here for the same old garbage that they want to sell liquor in the gas stations. Like everybody said, the gas stations are for gas stations. When we were here many years ago, some of you remember, some of you don't, they used to have people that pumped your gas, did your windshields. We don't have that anymore. So basically, what it all amounts to is money, and that's all it is, is. And I think we have enough places where you can buy liquor if you want. I said, if they want to sell something different, sell some hot dogs or some ice cream. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds good, actually. Beverly Bothias, please.
My name is Beverly Bothias, I've lived in West Covina for a very long time, raised my family here, and it's the kind of place I'd always wanted to be. I asked that there not be an amendment to Code eighteen oh four, allowing the sale of alcohol at gas stations. I spoke against it when it came before the council, not so long ago, as many others did, and it was turned down. Traffic conditions in West Covina get worse and worse. Traffic conditions in West Covina get worse and worse. Beer and other container liquors are sold at markets, markets and liquor stores. Unless one is living in their car, beer goes on the grocery list in almost every home. One goes to, into the cashier at a gas station to pay for gas, and that's it. It's business thing. You're like me, you're getting your gas in a hurry and fighting your place in line. You maybe get a soda or drink on your way, or a cookie if you're hungry. If your hand reaches in that refrigerator and it pulls out a beer, and it's in that refrigerator, it'll be popped as soon as it's in the car. Please don't put families more at risk on the road than they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Setliff. You're next.
Good evening. I too have lived here a long time. I agree with just about everything else that's been said already this evening, but based on history, I guess I'll only be here another 16 times when the other gas stations put it across, so, and I'll come back and say no again. So I'm in favor of leaving it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie Gilligan.
I'm going to start out with the statement that was made by a commissioner I respect. There is not a need in our city for service stations, gas stations, to be able to sell alcohol. We have plenty of grocery stores, independent stores, that sell exclusively alcohol, such as Bevmo. And then there's Target and Walmart, which residents use to purchase their alcohol. We residents are concerned the expanding of sales of alcohol will only exacerbate the issues created with having a limited law enforcement against gas stations that could be created. The residents are here to oppose changing the current law to allow the sales of alcohol at such stations. As we have said at prior planning meetings, we do not, we do not wish to allow the driving public, whose service stations primarily will sell to, the ability to stop and go with alcohol. We residents should be heard and taken into consideration over these types of businesses who are only considering their profits. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, Adnan Khan.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm going to 30 years doing business in West Covina. And as I was a young man, came to do business in West Covina, I also joined the Rotary Club. And what we started seeing at the Rotary Club as things progressed, and this was 1990s accidents, alcoholic-related accidents. We were losing students, we were losing our neighbors to alcoholic-related accidents. So as city leaders and as business community, Rotary Clubs, we all came together and said, there has to be solutions that we need to find to reduce this epidemic that's spreading in our city. The one thing I started with the Rotary Club was, we started doing a yearly pancake breakfast. Now, if you have lived in this city long enough, I'm sure you have gone to the pancake breakfast where we said no to alcohol, we said no to drugs. We also brought in the every 15-minute program, because every 15 minutes, somebody dies in the United States from an alcohol-related accident. And this was targeted towards the students. This program still goes on. The West Covina Police holds this every 15-minute program. If you Google it, you'll see this come up. And we then put in ordinances that would safeguard the city to be safe. And what has happened is alcoholic-related accidents with the amount of demographic and population we have in the city, they've reduced. We've started seeing lesser and lesser accident related to alcohol in our city. And what's made our city safe is the equation we built. We brought education for the students, we brought safety programs, we kept businesses that should not be in alcohol business to be in alcohol business. And that is why West Covina is a safe city. Now, I understand, gas stations want alcohol. Gas stations were a problem that we identified back then because the neighboring cities were allowing gas stations and started allowing gas stations. And when I do my research, that how safe gas stations are, I go to the Alcoholic Beverage Board website, which is open to everyone. You can research the violations gas stations are getting, selling beer to the minors on that, because all the cases get recorded. And you can go back 15, 20 years on that research. And the reason I do research is, I also sit on the board of the FBI Citizen Academy, so if you research my name in FBI, my name jumps up right up there. And what my research showed me was that it's a bad mix where people who are in the service industry of vehicles, people who need to go in and where alcohol is being served, alcohol gets served. So I would suggest, and I would ask, that the work we have done as business owners, as city commissioners, as city planners, and the past city officials, we put certain laws in place and made a good equation. That equation has made the city safe. And I thank West Covina because I got engaged so much with the students that in 2013, the White House gave me an award for working with the students. And my work still continues, helping and working with students. So in West Covina, I could have opened my other businesses with gasoline and beer and lobbied, but I did not. I went on to do businesses in other cities, but I stayed away from what's a bad mix because money is not everything that I want to make as a business owner. So I have never owned a service station where I was going to miss, mix alcohol with it. So as we city officials, as my neighbors, all of them sitting back, this is a safe city. And one thing I can tell you is, consumption of alcohol is the least in West Covina, and that is because the work we all have done. This is a neighborhood where we have a high amount of traffic, we have a high traffic coming in, but we have controlled our city very well from those migrants coming in, from people coming in who will stand there outside and then do wrong things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Mr. Sykes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I am Frederick Sykes, 41-year resident of West Covina, retired deputy sheriff, former human relations commissioner, planning commissioner, council member, and former mayor of the city. I'm here tonight to ask this commission to keep in place the City of West Covina's U.S. Supreme Court grandfathered law that prevents the sale of alcohol in gas stations in our I am asking this commission to appreciate and continue in the tradition of our previous commissioners, council members, and city leaders, who wanted to build a city that was designed as a bedroom community, a wholesome place. When you come here, you're greeted by green belts, parks, beautiful homes, and quality supermarkets, and shopping malls. A healthy city. This is the healthy city to live in, to invest in, to raise our children, and to become attached to our community. A place that is full of good examples for our children. There are certain activities that have a history of bringing decay and that are known to attract negative elements. There are certain types of businesses that have not been approved to open in our city. No all-nude bars, strip clubs, no non-medical marijuana dispensaries, no public illegal drug-injection sites. Now, of course, there have been some mistakes. However, for the most part, the leaders in our city have not turned away from common knowledge, the best practices, and conducting environmental impact studies before making decisions. Traditionally, and most often, our leaders have made decisions that do not harm and detract from our standard of living. We already have more than enough situations that allow for substance abuse, including alcohol. And we have places that attract homeless and derelicts. You can just go to any city park or open green space, and you will see evidence of public consumption of alcohol, marijuana, and other substances. And now, at this point in our history, add in that homelessness is an epidemic. In the city of Pomona, on Mission Boulevard, is a place called Hope for Home, a 400-bed, year-round facility for the homeless. It cost the taxpayers $10 million. Every elected and appointed city official needs to visit the Hope for Home facility and just understand who pays the most for the negative impact of these types of locations and social problems. It's the residents, the business owners, and our children. Please do not add to the problem. There is no rational or justifiable need for additional places to buy alcohol in the City of West Covina. And remember, places with liquor stores on most every corner are not healthy or affluent communities. West Covina enjoys a unique status in the St. Gabriel Valley, and that our city is one of the few with this no alcohol sold in gas stations. This tool for public safety and protecting our community standards will not be restored if we choose to throw it away at this time. Please, for now and into the future, preserve the law. No alcohol sold in gas stations. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Now, I have no other speaker cards. One second, Mr. Torres. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item, either for or against, that hasn't spoken before? Mr. Torres, you may come forward and please fill out a card.
I'll speak for you.
No, you can't speak again.
Yeah, he didn't speak at all.
Oh, he didn't speak at all? Oh, you can speak, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, come forward, because you spoke, he's in favor of it. Yeah, you're right. Thank you. What's your name? For our son.
Yeah, Sodi Shoker. So I'm the owner of the Chevron Station Mr. Wilkerson had mentioned earlier. Yeah, we've been trying to get this beer and wine for 10 years or 12 years. So it is, you know, everybody's opinion. I respect everybody's opinion. I respect other business person's opinion. So one thing I want to bring up, Mr. Khan has spoken against it. He has store right next door to me, so I have my customer buy gas there and goes over there by beer and wine. And he sells it all day long, no problem. So that's the only case I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Mr. Torres, and please fill out a card when you have a chance. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good evening, sorry. So I know there's a lot of discussion related to fairness in businesses and pro-business and the distinction between gas stations can be debated endlessly, but I'm a numbers-driven person, a data-driven person, and ultimately, allowing all these gas stations that were restricted for all these years into a over-concentrated city is detrimental to the public safety of West Covina. If you look on the ABC website, the Alcohol Beverage Control website, the recommended allowance of off-sale liquor licenses is 44. And then in Jeff's staff report, he indicated we have 55. So we're already over-concentrated, and when that happens, that's why they need to come before you and get a finding of convenience to be able to sell alcohol. Also, as I mentioned in the past, per the LA County Department of Public Health, the higher concentration of availability of off-site alcohol sales, the greater the negative impacts on the community. Such negative impacts are exactly why there are more deaths result from alcohol than all other major drugs combined. Another factor to consider is our city's ongoing problem with homelessness and vagrant population. This is a big deal, because I know there's a lot of issues with the homeless, and by allowing gas stations to sell alcohol, that will give another outlet to vagrants and homeless to drink in our parks and to drink near our schools and on our streets. The area also has a high number of sensitive uses, other sensitive uses such as daycares, churches, community centers, and single-family neighborhoods. So I know that this is a study session and not much has been discussed related to conditions, but as you know, I oppose it vehemently, but I know that there is a chance that it'll move forward. And the staff report was good, but I think that there needs to be more. I think that there needs to be a report prepared by the West Covina Police Department and incorporated with the staff report so we could get their full analysis. I think a detailed study on the over-concentration of liquor licenses should be done. The location of other off-sale licenses and on-sale licenses in relation to all the gas stations with or without convenience stores, this can be done using a database and mapping tools on the ABC website, so we could have an actual visual of all the hot points and all the liquor licenses throughout the city and where the concentrations are going to be. And I already kind of did that myself, and it's very revealing to know where all these locations are. Also, we need to evaluate and confirm the number of licenses and all the census tracts to make sure that where these gas stations are located, and if we do permit them to sell alcohol, they're not going to be in a really concentrated area. Comments on the proposed conditions? All the proposed conditions, I looked at a lot of these liquor licenses in the past, they're all standard conditions. All cities use most of these conditions. The only one that stands out is the 2,500-square-foot requirement for a convenience store. So I think that, out of all the 16, that's the only one that has any teeth, and that should definitely be left in 100% if we move forward with it. They need to have at least 2,500 square feet, and that was actually a recommendation of a previous planning commission, I believe. But it's a double-edged sword. Even with that, I don't think it would really help with the public safety issues, but if that's what we need to have to help, then... Also, I looked at the licenses, and almost all the gas stations are along the 10 freeway. And 11 or 12 of the 18, which is about two-thirds, are all around City Hall, and it's a huge concentration there. And if we allow that, there's going to be a hot point there where Del Norte Park is, the high school, Edgewood High School, all our parks, the hospitals. So that's something that we need to consider, and when we look at this, hopefully in the next study session, or hopefully tonight, that needs to be considered, because that's a big concern. And as somebody else mentioned, historically, we've asked for local control, and we've always complained about states' overreach. So this is one item that we want local control, and residents have voiced that in the past. In the last five seconds, 10 to 10 is a good condition, 10 p.m. to 10 a.m., and the security guard, I would say it would be another key condition that we should ask for if we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. And in the spirit, somebody's pacemaker? In the spirit of the topic, this is the last call on this item, if you wish to be heard tonight, for or against. I see no one rushing the mic, so thank you all, and I really appreciate all of you keeping within the time, because sometimes, you know, people tend to run on, like me up here, for example. example. But I'll say it for myself. But anyway, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of you coming forward. And let me just make a couple of comments to kind of start it going. Everybody came up here, had valid concerns that need to be addressed, they need to be heard, and we heard you tonight with your concerns. What I would like, and Mr. Torres just suggested it, and I was already on my little notes to do, I too want to hear from our police department. I think at the next, and there'll be another study session, I'm pretty sure, at the next police department, I'd like to hear from, at the next study session, I'd like to hear from our police chief and see where they're at on this, okay? I also would request staff reach out to the cities that are named in the report: Covina, Glendora, Azusa, Diamond Bar, and Whittier. I would like to find out from them what impacts, if any, they have by allowing what we're considering. I think it would be good to know that. I mean, the comment was mentioned that the cities are kind of, you know, low-end cities. I mean, I don't think any of these cities on the list are, you know, below the line cities. They're all good cities. So that's my request to start things off. I'd like to hear from, it's a study session, we're looking... Now, just one thing very clear, you know, back in September, we did vote to initiate the code amendment, okay? That's been initiated at this point. So now, we want to craft the ordinance as best we can among ourselves, listening to the audience and with our staff, to come up with standards that we want to have as part of the ordinance, because the idea is not to have a blanket, you know, you've got a gas station, you're now selling beer and wine. Number one, that ain't going to happen. Number two, there's a lot of these service station operators that have convenience stores that probably don't want to sell beer and wine. Not all of them do. I mean, there's a certain cost involved with that, and with the conditions or standards that we will probably impose, it's going to eliminate a lot of them, which is the point. That's the point. We want to make it not that easy. That's it for me for now. Who would like to make some comments on this? Commissioner Hing?
I actually want to clarify something regarding the study session. Initiating the study does not mean that we need to change the code, is that correct?
Initiating code amendment is an ability to study whether you want to change the code.
I just want the public to understand that as well, so that all of us as planning commissioners, especially, we have two new planning commissioners are here, we're initiating the study, whether it's to hear from the public, and also to determine whether we want to change the code or keep it the same. So that's what I like. And also, regarding the fire department, since we're having the police department come up with some type of study, perhaps we can also ask the fire departments to provide us some type of study of figures as well for next study session. Thank you.
Thank you, that's a good idea. And that point is well taken. I mean, no matter what we do here, at some point, once we have completed the study sessions, and then there is a public hearing where a decision will be made, one way or another, at that point, it'll get handed off to the city council, where they will have the final say, if we decide to move forward with it or not. Commissioner Haakas, please.
Yes. Sorry, in the spirit of also being, from one of, you have to hear one of our speakers, Mr. Torres, speak about being a very data-driven person, I think I kind of share that sentiment as well. So, you know, without necessarily expressing any particular viewpoint on the issue one way or the other, I do appreciate the fact that there is probably a lot of information that we could probably still utilize to understand our situation better, a lot of which Mr. Torres brought up and suggested be collected and displayed in various ways to help us understand what, you know, what our situation is here in West Covina, and also in the adjoining cities around us. So, I think, you know, I'd like to suggest that maybe we ask staff to come up with developing some of the information that Mr. Torres suggested, such as, you know, the availability of these various outlets in the city that sell alcohol, you know, off-sales sales, and, you know, give us just sort of both a numerical and graphical picture of, you know, what that concentration of availability is in our city, and to see what it looks like also in the adjoining cities like Covina, especially those that do have sales at gas stations, so that we see it just from the standpoint of, at least of availability, regardless of how, of where they're being sold. And that picture alone is something that I think we could all benefit from.
Yeah, thank you. Just say one thing real quick, that's a good idea, but that can certainly be, you know, asked of staff, and I'm sure staff will have a response. But I think tonight, we're also, staff is looking for direction from us as far as the standards that we want to include in a potential code amendment. So I'd like to have some discussion on that, on what the commission would like to see built in to a code amendment. Jeff?
Well, let me cover two things. First of all, you know, the planning commission always has three options: to basically approve something and say, hey, this is good, let's go forward, and in this case, let's go forward and prepare a resolution, or to bring back with the code amendment, to deny and say, we don't want to go any further, we don't want to do this. And then thirdly would be to continue it and give us direction for things to study, which it sounds like maybe what's where we're headed. I do, I do appreciate Mr. Torres's willingness to volunteer staff to come up with very technical things. We are not GIS specialists, none of us in the Pine Department. And GIS maps, while they look great, I think some of you that are aware of those things, you realize how long they take to put together the data. You may be talking about 10 hours worth of work, and that's not our staff, our staff doesn't have that capability. So we may be able to do some of the things that he had, that he mentions, we may be able to come up, because I think ABC does have some things on their website that might be in assistance, but ABC obviously doesn't have information on service stations on their website. And so, we can set about to try to do something in a fashion like that, but keep in mind, then now, we're going to have this map of the city, right? And how do we convey that to you? Because it's not going to, unless you get it on 24-by-36 map colored, which can be very expensive, then it's hard to see it without looking at it electronically, and some of you may not have the ability to open something up electronically. So I just, there are, some of that stuff's great, and I've seen it done well, but we have, we have resource limitations. So I would suggest that you, as you're going forward, if you decide you want to continue this for another, or I shouldn't say continue, request another study session, ask for further information, give us the information you're interested in finding out, we'll do the best we can to provide that in the format that we think, that we have the ability to do. So I think if that's the pleasure of the commission to hold another study session, then we should probably focus on what we should provide. I think maybe the first question from the commission discussion is, is that the direction you want to give? And then secondarily, if that's the direction you want to give, what would you like staff to try to research?
Thank you. Did you want to, I thought you had your, Commissioner Hing, no? Mr. Holtz?
Maybe, maybe ABC Alcohol Beverage Control, I know they usually set standards, it's not mandatory, but set standards as how many liquor locations there is in a certain geographic pattern, and I'm wondering if they could help us out a little bit with numbers as to grids or whatever it is that they have established, and give us a count, you know, of what's going on. Maybe it's there, maybe it's not, I don't know. It's not, I don't think it's mandatory, I think it's just recommendations and guidelines. Thank you.
Okay, you know, I'd kind of like to start discussing, you know, possible standards that we're looking for in the, in a potential code amendment. You know, we talked about minimum square footage. You know, I mean, this was, as Mr. Wilkins alluded, the last two times this has come in front of the planning commission, yours truly was part of that. And, you know, some of the conditions that we talked about were restrictive, I mean, one of them is a square footage, you know, there must be a minimum square footage. We talked about, you know, 2,500 square feet as an arbitrary number. Commissioner Hing?
Before we start discussing regarding conditions and standards, I think we should focus on the three possible, what Jeff had mentioned, regarding whether, one, we want to move on with this code amendment change, or, two, denied it, or, three, continue the study sessions. I think it's premature to have us discuss about the conditions or the standards at this moment, when we haven't decided whether, one, whether to approve it, or, two, to keep it the same, or, three, we should continue to do further study. So the standard is premature, so we should have a discussion about what do we want to do out of these choices first.
I agree with that, I think it's for putting the horse before the cart, we need to find out where we stand on it.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the commission?
Well, it sounds like what Commissioner Hing is recommending is that we take a vote down to, on one of those three, one of those three choices, and my, I guess if I were to make a motion, my motion would be that, would make a motion to continue additional study sessions after this session, at least one more study session, which at that time, you know, additional study sessions needed then, can be determined then, but at least one more study session.
And what were you looking forward to get in that second study session? That we get, and we have a study session on right now.
Right.
So my question is, what, is there something that we can discuss tonight, that we can maybe, you know, come to a conclusion tonight? Or what do we need to just talk about at the next study session? What you asked staff for?
What, I think, Commissioner Hing?
Commissioner Hing, go ahead.
I guess if, whether we have a second study session, because there are some questions that we still don't have an answer to, or we can decide whether to approve it or deny it tonight.
You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I do want to make that.
Okay. To have another study session?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to...
Is there a second?
Yeah. So all in favor of having another study session? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
So I think what, to try to move things forward, I think that, so the decision, sounds like the planning commission wants to have another study session. The, I've been obviously trying to take notes of what you've suggested, so there have been several things that have been suggested to bring back. First of all, well, I shouldn't say first of all, but in my list, no particular order, but here from the police department, here from the fire department. I don't know whether that be, they'll come here, or they'll provide a memo, but in some fashion or other, we'll ask for some information from them. Do a survey on some surrounding cities, generally, we do surrounding cities, we just do the cities that touch West Covina, we don't, you know, we don't do 25 miles or anything like that, so we just focus, that's actually about eight, I think, eight cities or so. So we'll find out what cities allow around, and we'll also, we'll check the ABC standards and see what kind of standards they set for, I believe it's per census tract, and then we'd have to do some analysis on how many census tracts there are in West Covina. So we can provide that information, we can also see what we can do to provide some kind of mapping distribution of off-sale, I think that's what you're interested in, off-sale licenses in the vicinity, and if we do that, we'll see if we can go beyond the city's boundaries by a mile or something. So that's what, that's what we have right now. So if that's a list that you're comfortable with, we could accept a motion.
And generally, I mean, without having it become too much of an extraneous, you know, burden on staff resources to accomplish that, now, I would move that we request a staff to produce that information, and make the request to police and fire to have, bring a report to the commission at the next study session.
Okay, I think that's part of the motion that was approved, right? Did you all that?
Yes, the things that I mentioned would be things we were going to do our best to bring back information.
Okay.
I do want to hear what he also said. I think Mr., I think Mr. Torres brought up some excellent points. All the, all the gas stations are probably within a half-mile of the 10 freeway. The only gas station south of Glendora and Cameron would be the 76 on Azusa and Neymar. Other than that, there's no other gas stations in the city limits. So it's all concentrate, everything's concentrate on the 10 freeway. So this is something I would like to absolutely look at.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, just point of clarity, I know staff is loaded down with things to do, but we're only focusing on carryout, we're not focusing on if it's a restaurant and that, that's not our issue, is it?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. That is correct, that's called on-sale.
I mean, that's a good number, I mean, we should know the number of the total, but what we're really focusing on is carryout.
Is off-sale, yeah.
Right.
And there's a different license at ABC, so it's easy, the information we got is from ABC based on off-sale.
Correct. Thank you.
Another thing I would like to mention, maybe I should have mentioned it earlier, but hopefully it can get through the, through the people that are interested, we're going to try to set up a, some kind of system for notification of interested parties, that is, if we can do that through email, through what we call e-notification, we'll try to do that, if that's not possible, we'll do a snail mail process, but we will set that up, so if people are interested, they can contact me or Joanne, and we'll start an email list right now, that way we can get back if we can't set that up. And with this much information, it's, this is not, this will be a little while before it comes back, probably six, eight weeks would be my rough guess, and that's, that's an optimistic guess.
Very good. Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for gathering this information, because I asked them to do that, and I know, like I say, they're loaded down, but I thought we needed to know how many locations there are to help us make a decision. So thank you for your work.
And if I could go through that list one last time, just so everyone has it sort of in their minds, we're asking for comment from the police department and from the fire department. We are going to do some analysis on other cities that are neighboring to West Covina, and whether they allow this type of sales at service stations. We're going to check the, how ABC sets their sort of guideline for number of liquor license per census tracker per population, and then we're going to try to establish a map for location of off-sale ABC uses within the city and with the close environs around the city. So those are the things we will be attempting to bring back to you.
Okay, everybody good with that? Yeah? All right. I guess that completes this study session, and thank you all again for coming. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, we have reached the point of the agenda where we All right. We have reached the point of the agenda where we have continuation of oral communications. Ask a question? Yeah, under oral communication. Sure, yeah, come on up, Mr. Torres.
I wasn't sure if we could ask you, because I've already spoken, so, yeah. The, I just, I know you went back and forth, but, so my...
It can't be on an item we just finished on the agenda?
No, I just have a question.
On the item we just finished?
A question, yeah.
Then you need to wait. We can't, we closed that item, we've moved on. Oral communications for items that are not on the agenda.
Okay. Can I make it a rhetorical question?
You can tell us after the meeting.
No, I just, I thought it was a report, but what I understood was, I'll just speak to myself, I understood it as commentary from the chief and from the fire. I don't know if it was necessarily a report. So you don't have to answer anything. I'm just, that was a question I had in my mind that if it was either a report or just, he's going to come up here and talk without doing any research or, you know, okay.
All right. All right. Next is commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous. Anyone have anything? No? I just want to, I know that the new commissioners are aware that we have the Subcommittee for Design Review that currently myself and Vice Chair Hing sit on. Typically, the, geez, my little nose is starting to bleed. Typically, the chair does not sit on that. I mean, it's not verboten, but, you know. So my plan is, normally it would be the vice chair, who'd be the next chair, and another commissioner. So my plan is probably in May sometime, I would step away from that post, because I continue on as the chair, and I probably would look to appoint, at this point, Commissioner Haques in two months, in May, to join Vice Chair Hing on that. I think by that point, you'll probably be, well, both of you will be, and you'll get on there too, eventually, maybe. You'll join her on that Subcommittee. You know why that was created and all that. I think Jeff's probably gone over that with you. Okay, so that's the plan. Just keep that, you know, in mind, okay? Any other comments on this item, on commissioner comments? Nope? Okay, then let's go to the Community Development Director's report.
We have forthcoming on there, which you'll note, we have some items on the March 12th meeting. Most of those are informational and study sessions, well, I shouldn't say most of them. They're all study session informational-type items. So that, I noted you broke your streak of being completed before eight o'clock, so maybe we can get back to that at the next meeting, we'll see. So we do have items for the twelve, so keep that in mind. And then we do have Subcommittee, as the chairman was just mentioning, we do have a Subcommittee for Design Review minutes for the last couple meetings. We provide those to you guys, usually once a month, minutes that have happened, so you kind of have an idea what the two members of Subcommittee are doing, and it's also a way to publicize that for the public, because it's on there as well. So that is all I have to report.
City council action, if any.
I don't think I have anything to report from city council.
They had a record short meeting themselves.
They did, yes.
It was quite short.
They'll be disappointed in you tonight.
Yes. Okay, that's the end of the agenda. If there are no objections to adjournment? Hearing none? We're adjourned at nine o'clock.